This conference will now be recorded.
Yay.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the to Nino City Council's work session. I think we got everybody here. We have, we have joining us are what will be our newest council member after the election is certified. It's Elaine Clam, but I see Effie. What do you go by Effie?
Um, that's my, no, I go by Elaine.
Okay. Okay.
Effie is my first name, but I never use it.
Okay. Do you want to introduce yourself to everybody?
Um, Elaine Clam and the newest addition to your city council. I'm sure most of you have read the profile and the voter's pamphlet and or my Facebook posts.
There was a, there was a pamphlet or something?
Yeah, someplace out there.
Welcome Elaine.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Elaine? Or Elaine, you got any questions for us?
No, I'm just gonna sit here and observe and try to learn.
Awesome. Congrats and welcome.
Yeah, yeah. Congrats, welcome. Tonight, you're, you're, you know, you're, you're welcome to to observe and, and, you know, participate where, where it makes sense. You're not a voting member yet, so if you, you can say yea or nay, but it, you know, it doesn't count for anything. You can just play the game. But, uh, yeah, welcome, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
So we will, uh, we're gonna go over the budget revenue or proposed budget revenue. And, uh, so Jen will take the agenda to that portion. Going down a little further. So what we have presented is our, our spreadsheet of, and it'll show 2018, 2019, 2020, what was brought in and the different revenue sources. And, uh, what was proposed in 2021, and then yellow is where we're at currently. And then on the far right is 2022 proposed. So the far right column is, uh, is what we are proposing for the revenue. And we, we included where we're at with expenditures, but, but we're not, we're not going over that tonight. So if you look, you know, the big, the two biggest ticket items are of course personal property taxes and sales tax. We've estimated that we will bring in, if we, if we, uh, pass the, the levy at the rate that we set, which is, you know, that 1%, we'll bring in 308,916, up from 272 last year. The, really, the, the most striking change, and I, I find it really interesting, is our sales tax revenue. We've, we've almost doubled our sales tax revenue. So what we proposed in 2021 was that we would bring in $242,000 in sales tax. What we brought in so far is 320,000. So that, that's a huge increase. And we still have two months left. So we're proposing that next year, uh, right now, and this, we may change this number, but we've got in there the figure of 350. If you just, uh, take what we've made so far this year and march it out, it'll, it'll, we'll, we'll bring in about 390, 380,000 dollars this year, which is, that's, that's a huge increase. And, uh, and so we're being a little conservative. We may, we may change that number. We have a healthy, thriving business community. Uh, I think that that, you know, that really tells us that our, the work that we're doing in economic development is, is paying off. So, you know, the sales tax is what's generated every time anybody buys something into Nino. And then the other thing that, the only thing that I can think of to really account for that is, is people shopping on Amazon. So if you, uh, you know, people perhaps one, you know, three years ago, they were going to Walmart to buy, uh, you know, household items and things like that, that you couldn't get into Nino. They were going out of town. Now that they're shopping on Amazon and just haven't delivered to their house, the sales tax revenue is, is captured by Tino. So we're bringing in a lot of extra money in sales tax. That's, it's, it's shocking. Go down, you can just keep, keep cruising down. Not a lot of big changes. Uh, we've added in our utility, so we will put it, we will be putting a utility tax on the septicage, the septicage revenue or the septicage process. And, uh, we don't know what that number's gonna be yet, but, so we've just got zeros and, and we'll be, we'll be working on figuring out what that number could be. So there'll, there'll be a, a change there. We have no really big, uh, building plans. So we're not, we don't have any, uh, we're not going heavy on building permits. If you go to there's a couple other spots for addition for some new revenue. Oh, we are in talks about leasing out the old Public Works Building. So we have a, a private party that is interested in half the shop. And then we have a, the stone carvers are interested in the other half of the shop. We've got some, some kind of estimates from Commercial Realtor. Says that we should charge about 700 bucks a month for, uh, the rental of each half. So we've put in a little bit of revenue from that that would be new. And that is really about it. Are there any questions on the three pages of revenue? So we want, we're asking the council, look at this tonight, and then we pass a resolution accepting, uh, kind of the general revenue figures. These are, are subject to change. Any changes we make at this point, we're gonna let you know. We're gonna, we're gonna point it out at the next meeting. The next meeting, we'll do this on expenditures, uh, which is a lot more pages. And, uh, then the third, two meetings from now, we'll do this on the whole budget as a whole, and we'll hopefully adopt it.
Wayne, the packet I got last Friday, is this still the same as on here, all the numbers?
Most of it's the same.
I don't have to look at the computer screen?
The only difference is the total of, is 350. On the one that we got, it was 310,000.
Yeah, it's just 350.
The other difference, Jason, is that we did add the, um, the rental of the Public Works Building, the old Public Works Building. That was an addition since you received your last copy.
Okay.
And that we're estimating about $9,000 for next year.
Do we have any other questions?
The county's gonna give us our final numbers?
With regard to what?
Revenue. As, as far as our property tax, because right now, this is just estimated. So that should change. It should go up a little bit. But, uh, at, at this point, it's still a little bit early, I believe. So we're, we're, we're just guessing at what we're bringing in for property tax. Do we have an idea when the county's actually gonna give us our filing, the final numbers?
I do not.
Okay.
That's something that Caitlin can follow up with, I'm sure.
Um, I've been in contact with Linda Ribbick, who is amazing at the Thurston County Assessor's Office. And, um, as soon as she has the figures as far as what the fire department is going to be levying for and what the library will be left, levying for, she will get those figures to me. Those really are the only two things that, you know, are estimates at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Good questions. Any others? Okay, uh, we'll be having a public hearing tonight on the budget, a public hearing at the next meeting, and a public hearing at the third meeting. So, uh, that, you know, that'll be the opportunity for the public to speak. All right, that's it for, uh, planned items on this, on the work session, so we can get right into reports. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna sneeze. Hold on. Bless you. It passed. All right. Reports is, is George present? I think I see George there. George, is that you? George, would you like to give a presentation or present on, uh, report on the Chamber of Commerce?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council members. The chamber had a busy month of October where they had a scarecrow contest and also a coloring contest and a fine art contest. And we announced the winners of the coloring contest yesterday. We had 174 entries. And we're just getting ready tonight to announce the winners of the scarecrow contest. We had 18 entries into the scarecrow contest, and we had 15 entries into the fine arts contest. We held the, as you know, we held the candidates forum on October 20th. And this month, we're gonna have on the 17th, that'll be the nonprofit showcase at the chamber launch. It'll be held at the Kodiak Room. And then in December, we'll be having the Christmas tree lighting on December 3rd. It'll be on Friday night. Six o'clock start with the Tino High School band and choir. And then the Tino Motorcycle Drill Team somewhere around 6:40 to 7 o'clock. And then Santa will arrive, and then we'll have the Christmas tree lighting. And the winner of the People's Choice of the Coloring Contest actually won the right to flip the switch on the Christmas tree. So that's exciting for that. And then, uh, December lunch will be the third Wednesday, and that one, we're gonna do where we're gonna honor Heddens family for all their years of service to Tino. That's the chamber report.
George, I think you guys did amazing. The scarecrows were brilliant. It was, it looked really nice. And then tying the art contest into switching, flipping the switch, that, I think was fantastic job by the chambers. Really cool.
Thank you. The EDC turnout, so.
Yeah, 18 scarecrows. That was pretty cool. EDC report.
I don't have a specific report. I do know that Thurston Strong will be announcing either Friday or Monday the new grant program for businesses and nonprofits. So everybody should watch thurstonstrong.org. Make sure you sign up on their, uh, webpage to receive emails about that. So that'll be exciting coming out. The EDC is gonna administer the small business grants, and the South Puget Sound Community Foundation will be administering the nonprofit grants.
Excellent. Fire District 12.
I know report, we meet Thursday.
Library is Linda. Library Linda, are you present? I don't believe so. Museum.
No report. Linda, you got something?
No, I don't. I just know that Jessica's up there on, like, I think Saturdays and Sundays, or maybe it's Fridays and Saturdays, but.
Uh, Tino Community Service Center. Jody, are you with us? There she is. Hi, Jody.
Hello, hello. Um, the only thing that we have to say, uh, at this point is we will not be having Winter Fest this year. So we're hoping to get back next year. Let's, you know, hopefully.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Arch Commission.
So we have one more candidate that's gonna apply for us, so we should have a slate of five for you this coming month, Mayor.
Okay. Uh, Civil Service Commission, we have three civil service applicants that we're, uh, reviewing, and the administration is asking for confirmation tonight. So, uh, hopefully we'll have a, we'll have our Civil Service Commission cooking again soon. Facade Improvement Grant Review Committee, Linda, I don't think you, I don't believe you have anything, do you?
No, I've contacted the people that, um, applied, uh, for the grant and have not completed. But with the weather, the way it is, it looks a little bit iffy, but I just, I try to stay in touch with them. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Chief of Police.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, before I begin, George, what time is the tree lighting?
The tree lighting is going to be, uh, at 7 o'clock. So 6 o'clock starts with the band and the choir. Then the, the motorcycle drill team at 6:40 to 7:00. And then the lighting at 7 o'clock.
Yeah, thank you, sir. What I had to report is, uh, one thing that's been busted at the Police Department for quite some time is the, uh, electronic security gate. And so we had a, uh, a contractor come out and take a look at it, and he spent about both 60 to 90 minutes and drove away. It's working. And just some type of, some type of an electrical problem, and it's fixed. And we'll get the bill, and we will absorb it into this current year's budget without any issue. So that feels good. It was an easy fix.
Awesome.
Go ahead.
I said awesome.
Yes, thank you. Uh, this Monday, the, it's the 15th. This Monday, the 15th, is, uh, at 1 o'clock in the afternoon, we begin our interviews for the Police Chief applicants. And they should be done by 5 o'clock that evening. And, um, then I'm gonna meet with the mayor beforehand, go through applications. And then subsequent to the, uh, interview process, I'll meet with the mayor again and go through the results. So we can take the next step from there as to who we begin with, uh, doing a background and going through that process. Have no idea how long that will take, but we're gonna expedite this and get this taken care of. I'm hopeful it'll be the end of the year. Maybe January, 1st of January, we'll be able to swear someone, the Americans swear somebody in. We'll just have to wait and see how long the background, poly, the psych, and the medical, uh, take. And that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sir, Director of Public Works.
Yes, I am. I got a question for the tree lighting. The date on that?
12/3.
12/3.
Yeah, Friday, December 3rd.
Okay. And it's still planned on closing Sussex Town?
Yep, he just turned his application in today.
Okay, I didn't see that. So I was just, I was just curious. So I have to go file for a permit. Okay.
Awesome.
It's, it's, I guess I can start off with, uh, what's the big topic of today is the storm drain down by IGA and the new gas station. We are in the process of getting that fixed and handled. We got some stuff, some basins showing up tomorrow to kind of fix that problem. And also there was some basins up above, like on Bogner, Headen East, um, and Reynolds that were actually plugged also. So all that extra water was coming down the road to, um, make that situation worse than it was. But right now, I'm sure if you drive out there with this rain we've had, it's probably flooding again, but probably not as bad as it was, but still flooding. But note that we will, um, probably have that fixed, uh, towards the end of the week. I'm sure a lot of you heard about the water, um, hot water tank at the Corey House. Failed. We had a little water leak going on in there. So, um, we will be working on that to dry that out, and I, I don't know if it's something that we should go to insurance about. If you guys think that's probably a good idea, maybe we could file for a claim for, um, getting that stuff repaired. If, if you guys think that we need to, then let me know.
I don't think it would hurt anything.
Yeah, I mean, that's not really a council matter, but.
Yeah, I just brought it up. I didn't, that's, so.
Well, if you talk to insurance, don't say flooding.
Okay.
Say water damage.
I'm hoping Caitlin will help me out with this. Okay, so.
I can do that.
Okay, great. And then, um, so I've got like four classes coming up. I got three this month to do for water, um, management. I've got a class in, um, December, the end of December for, um, hydrant maintenance, but a lot of, uh, so Brent and Miles will be can, attending that class for the hydrant maintenance. And then me and Brent have, uh, professional growth within the water system, two days of classes for that. And then, um, tomorrow I have a class. It's, um, about grease within the wastewater treatment plant. So that one should be pretty interesting how to deal with and how to maintain the grease within that plant. What else can I talk about? Um, let's see, I, I think that's pretty much it. It was just basic stuff. We, uh, winterized the bathrooms, got those closed down. Cleaned some gutters out. We've had some issues with the heating, um, at the museum and the Corey House, but we got those fixed. But that's pretty much it, unless anybody's got some questions and anything else.
Are there any questions for the Public Works Director? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. City Planner, Building Official.
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Okay.
Nothing too exciting this month. Um, I've only got one open case remaining, which, uh, is being handled with the, uh, the lady, the owner of the, of the house. He's being cooperative and we're getting that squared away with an abandoned vehicle, so we can get that removed. Waiting on some paperwork to come back from the, uh, vehicle owner itself, which the landowner has, uh, presented to them. So once that comes in, we should be able to get the vehicle removed. Over at, uh, Corey House, we got the hand railing fixed over there. So that is now safe to use on the handicap ramp again. And the facility maintenance building, we found the archive room back there. So I am going through that and reorganizing the archive room. So we'll have a better place to, uh, do some plan reading when it comes, uh, when it comes time. And, uh, Tuesdays, I've been doing my normal routes with LG, the building official, doing inspections on, with him. And I can tell you, today we signed the final on the gas station. So that should be opening, uh, soon. They've just got a small, little punch list to do over there, and then that place will be ready to go. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Uh, you, you mentioned the hand railing on the, on the ramp at the Corey House. Linda and I were at Corey House, and the hand railing at the front door on the right side is pretty wobbly. Maybe if you're in that area again, take a look at that. Somebody, you or Troy, or.
Absolutely.
Any questions for the building official? Okay. City Attorney not present. Clerk Treasurer.
All right. Well, I don't really have a lot to report. Just basically on the, um, city building remodel that's going on, the renovation is looking fantastic. They are moving right along. Um, I think I mentioned at last meeting that and the office, we would probably be displaced in November, but it looks like the projection is more December. Um, at that time, I guess we'll have to figure out where, where we'll be working from. And other than that, I think, um, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we have our city engineer with us tonight. He doesn't typically attend, but if, uh, he wants to report on his Tino goings on, you have three minutes.
No, Mayor, um, Mike Marshall here. I, I'm really just here for the, the poll bid, finally.
Okay, awesome. Yes, we're excited about that. My report, I came to a couple meetings, uh, you know, worked with, you know, various departments. We've been, uh, going over budget numbers almost daily, or I have been almost daily. They have been doing it definitely daily. And, uh, and that's been, that's been our, our, our biggest, uh, job. Met with Linda and our new council member today. Got her a elected official's handbook, and we're getting her hooked up with, uh, some of the training that she's gonna need to get done. And, uh, get her off and running, and we'll be ready for her to be sworn in at the next meeting. Attended the EDC, uh, board retreat and, uh, and the mayor's luncheon last Friday. Be that.
No report.
Okay. Steady. George, do you have a report for steady? George? Okay. Can you guys hear me?
Sorry, Mayor, I tried to get unmuted there. Yeah, steady will be next Friday, the, and not this Friday, but next Friday, and we're gonna have representatives from Puget Sound Energy and attendance that'll, about the programs that they offer to our rural communities.
Okay, thank you, sir. School Board, Rachel.
Sorry, it took me a second to get everything on. Um, so I have a lot to actually report for the school board. My pen was on fire between the meeting and talking to the superintendent. So I'm gonna start with sports because I think this is pretty incredible. Um, so our football is, uh, going to state, or they're, went to state last weekend. So their first state game is going to be this Friday. They're playing against the Scotties at home. If they win this game, or when they win this game, their possible, uh, game next time will be either Granite Falls or Linden Christian. And that'll be like the, uh, 19th or 20th is when it's kind of scheduled for. Um, and the Tino Marching Band will be there this Friday. They've been really, really working on a lot of stuff. The last game, uh, last weekend, if anyone got to see it, um, the theme was blackout, and the marching band went out and the lights went off, and they all had their, like, glow sticks around their instruments, and they had it on themselves, and it was a really cool performance. So they're planning on, on something else at halftime this Friday. So that'll be really exciting to see. And, um, the girls soccer is going to state. Their game is tomorrow. So they're gonna be at Oak Harbor. So wish them well on that. And, um, I wanted to recognize, we have two cross-country boys that represented Tino. Carson Hart and Tristan Von Bargen. Uh, there was 159 in our, in our league that ran. And they placed pretty good, 89th and 147th. So they represented Tino very well. So I also wanted to talk about Cheer Boosters. So this is for all businesses in Tino. They are doing a, what's called Damn Proud storefront decorating event, and it's gonna be a competition. So each storefront is going to decorate however they want to for all of the teams going to state.
Beaver Dam, right?
Right, right. So, um, it's just, it's just, just show support for the girls going to state and the football team going to state, and, um, the decor must be done by November 12th. And the Cheer Boosters is gonna come around, and they're gonna do the voting. So the winner of the storefront decorations, um, they're gonna get a gourmet gift basket for their staff lounge, or whatever kind of business it is. They'll get a nice little gift basket from Cheer Boosters. So if City Hall was interested, um, then they would give you guys a basket if you won.
Jen is all over it.
I was gonna say, um, I didn't, I didn't wanna say anything, call her out on it, but she is our town decorator. So we kind of need her. And if you need some, uh, black and red decor, um, I might have some. So, um, in other news, the district is gonna do their support for veterans tomorrow as well. Um, you, weather permitting, we're going to have, it's kind of cool. So the soldiers will be running an exercise here in town, and they're actually going to be, um, landing a helicopter in the boys' softball field, or baseball field, sorry, not softball, but the boys' baseball field. They'll be landing a helicopter and kind of doing some of their exercises there for the kids to kind of see. And if anybody in the town kind of wants to go check it out, you know, you're welcome to go check it out. So it's gonna be a big thing. Hopefully, if it's not pouring and storms, and they're able to do that. So they kind of stressed weather permitting. So let's hope that that's still gonna happen. But anyways, um, that's all I have for the district. As far as, um, COVID, I mean, you know, the COVID in the district obviously is always gonna be an ongoing situation. They're kind of tackling one case at a time. They're doing pretty good at it, and, you know, so far, they've been able to keep kids safe and monitor those who do have symptoms and those who are positive. So they've been really working with department now on that. Um, but I think that's all I have for the school board, unless anybody has any questions.
Yeah, um, I just saw Tristan Von Bargen and Carson on, they just got on here. So, uh, congratulations to those two for cross-country state meet.
Yes, I am super proud of these boys. They did amazing, and they represented Tino very well. Yeah. So other than that, that's it for the school board.
I have a question. Councilmember Davidson, what time is the helicopter?
Uh, Councilmember Davidson, what time is the helicopter school or the landing? Should it happen?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's at ten AM.
And thank you.
Yes. Weather permitting.
Yeah.
They were very serious about that.
Awesome. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Rachel. TPB.
Uh, tomorrow morning.
Alrighty. All right, it is now seven thirty. Perfect timing. That brings us to our regularly scheduled meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the November ninth, twenty twenty-one Tenino City Council meeting. Let the record show that all council members are present. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. One nation under God.
Thank you, everybody. All right, we have an agenda before us. It's been moved and segmented to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Okay, that brings us to the minutes. These are the minutes for the ten twenty-six Tenino City Council meeting. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Is, all right, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion to approve the minutes passes. Thank you. Uh, next up is the consent calendar. This is the consent calendar consisting of October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one through November ninth, twenty twenty-one. Payroll EFTs in the amount of thirty-two thousand one hundred and twenty dollars and eighty-one cents. Claims checks number three zero two zero seven uh through three zero two three four and EFTs in the amount of seventy-one thousand nine hundred and eight dollars and thirty-four cents for a grand total of one hundred and four thousand twenty-nine dollars and fifteen cents with no liquor or cannabis license renewals.
No problem.
Second.
It's been moved and segmented to prove the consent calendar. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Executive session, none. Presentations, none. Uh, that brings us to public comments. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to provide public comment, now is your opportunity to do so. You'll be given three minutes. Please state your name and address. Would any of our guests like to provide public comment to the Tenino City Council? Going once, going twice, moving on. Uh, that brings us to our public hearing, our first, our one, one of two. Uh, state law provides that each municipality hold two public hearings prior to budget adoption in order to provide the opportunity for input by the public. Tonight's hearing will focus primarily upon revenue. The public hearing is for public input and discussion of twenty twenty-two budget revenue. This public hearing will proceed in an orderly fashion and I would like to ask for your cooperation in the following procedure. Everyone present will be given an opportunity to be heard. The clerk will be recording what is said. Therefore, when you address the council, please begin by stating your name and address. Before hearing from the audience, I'm going to introduce Ms. Kailene Canop, the city's Clerk Treasurer, who will discuss how she derives some of the budget figures. Kailene?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. And this is our proposed twenty twenty-two budget. If you look, there's twenty eighteen down to twenty twenty-two. And this is a revenue hearing only. As you see over on the right, far right column, a lot of these um figures are estimates. Um, and some of them are by contract. The ones that are by contract obviously are, you know, the set rates. The estimates, in order to figure those out, we kinda go off of kind of the current as well as what was um compared to what was proposed last year. It's kinda just a run through. Um, again, these are subject to change before the final approval. As you see on the first line, we have our levy taxes, property taxes. Um, last year compared to this year. In the current, you know, we haven't finished out our year yet. Um, there is going to be an increase, but we will get to that later. That's our other hearing that we have. Um, as Mayor mentioned earlier, our proposed amount for last year for sales and use was the two hundred and forty-two thousand nine hundred and twelve. But we've already brought in three hundred and twenty thousand already this year. We're proposing that for twenty twenty-two that it'll probably be three hundred and fifty thousand. It could potentially be more than that. Um, we also, if you go down a little bit further, we are planning on eventually doing a utility tax on septic receiving. Uh, we do not have a figure on that yet, but that is going to potentially bring in some revenue for us. Um, another factor is we plan on leasing out our old Public Works building. We have two parties that are more than likely going to be doing that. And we figure that's going to generate about nine thousand dollars worth of revenue. Um, let's see here. As far as new things to be added, I would say that those things are the newest. Um, we do potentially, let me see here, I'm looking. Anyway. Again, I just went off of last year's versus what we've brought in to determine this year's. Again, there a lot of the figures are just estimates at this time. And again, we'll be able to change. Mayor, did you have anything that you would like to add?
Nope, we're good. All right, okay, at this time, the floor is open for comments from the audience. In fairness to all in attendance, each person will be given an opportunity to address the council for initial period not to exceed three minutes. If more time is needed, it will be made available after everyone has had the chance to speak. I'm requesting council members to hold their questions of the public until everyone is done. At this time, we are opening up for public testimony. Is there anyone that would like to provide public testimony regarding budget? Okay, council members, do you have any questions of the audience or the staff? Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Thank you. That brings us to public hearing number two. Thurston County has provided the assessed valuation and property tax worksheet for the purpose of calculating and the ad valorem property tax for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. The city will hold two public hearings as required by RCW eighty-four dot five-five on the November ninth and twenty-third and is required to pass an ordinance adopting the twenty-two twenty-two property tax by November thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. At this time, I would like to open the public hearing for the ad valorem tax levy. The public hearing is, this public hearing is for public input and discussion of the ad valorem tax. This public hearing will proceed in an orderly fashion and I would like to think, I would like to ask your cooperation in the following procedure. Everyone present will be given an opportunity to be heard. The clerk will be reporting what is said. Therefore, when you address council, please begin by stating your name and address. Before hearing from the audience, I'm going to introduce Ms. Kailene Canop, the city's Clerk Treasurer, to present information about this topic. Kailene?
Again, good evening, everyone. Um, this evening, I'm going to introduce introduce you to the proposed ad valorem tax levy for twenty twenty-two. It's limited by the state legislature as the higher of the implicit price deflator IPD, which is similar to a consumer price index. I think I'm gonna skip over this, however, and have you scroll down, Jen, if you would please, to the actual resolution. That's, this is our levy certification that we have to submit to the county. Keep going, sorry. Where's all the papers? Oh, there it is. This is our resolution that we are going to ask to be adopted at more than likely the next meeting. It's the twenty twenty-one dash oh seven resolution. Um, Jen, if you will continue to scroll down to the levy limitations worksheet.
Quiet. What are we doing?
I'm not sure what form you're wanting here or where it's at in the packet.
It looks like this one, huh? A levy limitation worksheet. Oh, sorry. Do you know what? Go ahead and just leave this page up. On a levy limitation worksheet. Basically, what that is, is it's a, it's a form that was constructed by the Department of Revenue um in order to try and figure out what your highest lawful limit is um in regards to levying for funds. The process for figuring out what we may levy is a multi-step process. Um, what you do is you figure the highest regular tax, which could have lawfully, that you could lawfully levy in the city of Tenino. Originally, our highest lawful levy that we could achieve was set in two thousand seventeen, which was um two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, two hundred and eighty-three thousand eight dollars and eight cents. And then what you do is times that by a hundred and one percent, which came up to two hundred and eighty-five thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars and sixteen cents. And that was set back in two thousand seventeen. That was the highest lawful levy that we had had. Um, this year, for current year's assessed value of new construction and improvements, that actual or assessed value was set at twelve mil- twelve million five hundred and seventy-two thousand one hundred. And then you multiply that by last year's levy rate, which was one point seven nine. And you divide that by a thousand dollars. So the current year's assessed value of new construction is twenty-two thousand five hundred and nine dollars and ninety-six cents. The current year's state assessed property value less last year's state assessed property value is five million seven hundred and fifty-one thousand two hundred and sixty-one minus the previous year's assessed value of five million four hundred and thirty-three dollars, four hundred and thirty-three thousand six hundred dollars, which leaves a remainder of three hundred and seventeen thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars. The remainder of the three hundred and seventeen thousand six hundred and sixty-one dollars times last year's levy rate of one point seven nine divided by a thousand dollars comes up to five hundred and, or five, yeah, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-six cents. What you do is you um add all those three lines together. So the two eighty-five, eight thirty-eight, the twenty-two thousand five hundred and nine and the five hundred and sixty-eight seventy-six, which brings our regular property tax levy amount to three hundred and eight thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty-eight cents. That is actually our highest lawful levy for the year that we will be able to levy for. And you can see all those figures on this um page that Jen has up. Assess value of new construction, twelve thousand five hundred and seventy-two one twelve million five hundred and seventy-two thousand one hundred times the twenty-twenty rate, which equals twenty-two thousand five hundred and ten dollars. And then the amount for the new construction, which is the five hundred and sixty-eight dollars, which again brings our regular levy amount to the three hundred and eight thousand nine hundred and sixteen, which happens to be also our highest levy amount, our highest lawful levy amount. So our highest lawful levy amount and our total regular levy amount just happens to be the same this year. That doesn't always happen that way.
Okay, thank you.
As you see, we do have the fire district levy. Right now, it's just an estimate of one point three six. Um, our maximum levy, you see by statute, is three point six zero. So you subtract the one point dollar thirty-six and the thirty-two cents, which is an estimated district levy, which John, you had asked about, and we don't have those figures, as I mentioned before. Um, so our estimated levy amount is two dollars and nine cents for every thousand dollars of the assessed value, which is the two million five hundred and eleven thousand two hundred.
Okay.
Which we come up with our statutory maximum of three hundred and sixty-four thousand eight hundred and eighty-two, which obviously we, we cannot do that because that's not within our realm, which brings us down to the three hundred and eight thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars, which is again the total amount we can levy for.
Okay, thank you, Kailene. Uh, at this time, the floor is open for comments from the audience. In fairness to all in attendance, each person will be given an opportunity to address the council for an initial period not to exceed three minutes. More time is needed and will be made available after everyone has had a chance to speak. I'm requesting council members hold their questions of the public until everyone is done. Uh, this opens, opening up public testimony. If there's anyone in the public that would like to provide testimony to the council, please do so now. Council members, do you have any questions, audience or staff? Public hearing closed. Thank you. Next order of business, review quarry pool bids. I'll now hand the microphone over to Mr. Mike Marshall.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, so, yeah, we put this out on the street. This is the fifth time we put it out to bid. Cause I just, I wasn't gonna give up. We, we have the grant money and I was gonna put it to use. So this time we were successful. We got a decent bid. We got two bids. One from Orca Pacific for two hundred and thirty-five thousand and then Rogland submitted again for five hundred and ninety-nine. So, uh, which is way out of bounds. So Orca Pacific comes highly recommended. Um, I met with Ben down there at the pool before he bid a couple of weeks ago. So he's, he's familiar with what the setting is and he knows what he needs to do. And then he's gonna be the prime and he'll hire a um a deck contractor. Help him fill out around the pool and put in a like a patio deck. And then uh he'll also hire an electrician. And then uh he'll also hire an electrician that'll be under him. So, um, with that, I'm looking for a motion to accept the award um and awarded to Orca Pacific and then authorized, and then authorized to uh sign the agreement, the contract, once we get back to bonds and insurance.
Do we have a motion to accept the bid from Orca Pacific?
Yeah, you already got a second as well.
We have a second. Okay?
Yes.
Is there any discussion?
Do we know a timeline on, on when the pool will be ready to be used again?
Yeah, it'll be ready by next July. The, the C D B G, the C D B G funding, I think, goes through like May or April or May. But if, if Orca Pacific runs into issues, we can get C D B G to extend that yet again. But it'll definitely be ready by the July opening. Bye.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mike's worked pretty hard on this. A lot of people have. So thank you, Mike. Thank you, Public Works, for getting it ready. Uh, we're all looking forward to getting this, getting this work done. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion accepted to accept the bid from Orca Pacific. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, new business, review civil service applicants. We have three applicants. Uh, one, Ms. Jody Stoltz. Uh, another is, uh, keep going there, Jen. All right, I got, actually, I got her here too. Another from uh Mr. Jeff Copeland. This is uh, you, and these are all familiar characters. And then a third is from Mr. Tyler Whitworth. So we are asking that council confirm the three civil service applicants presented tonight.
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to confirm the appointments of Jody Stoltz, Jeff Copeland, and Tyler Whitworth to the Tenino Civil Service Commission. Is there any discussion?
Welcome aboard.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Closed. Motion passes. Thank you. Next item of business is resolutions. Uh, we have before you a completed resolution uh for the LeMay wastewater service rate increase. This is a resolution of the city of Tenino, the city council. Uh, Thirteenth County, Washington, authorizing the mayor to sign an addendum to the solid waste collection agreement with LeMay Enterprises. Council has reviewed. We have a move, motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, uh, we have motion on the floor. Is there any discussion regarding the waste or the uh solid waste collection agreement with LeMay? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Next up, we have a proposed resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero seven. This would establish the ad valorem tax levy for twenty twenty-two. This resolution would authorize the collection of three hundred and eight thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars, representing a dollar increase of thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four over the past levy year. Our statutory increase will be limited to a one percent increase over the past years and represents the highest lawful levy the city may impose absent a voter-approved levy lidlet.
Move the resolution.
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero seven. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. This will come up again at the next meeting. That brings us to public comment period number two. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to provide public comment, now is your time to do so. You'll be given three minutes. Please state your name and address. Last chance, public comment. Moving on, announcements. Does anyone have any announcements?
There's going to be a holiday market Thanksgiving weekend at the Kodiak Room. All local artists are going to be there. I think there's thirty vendors going to be there, and I will be present and George will be present. So I hope to see everybody out.
Yeah, it was a great market last year. It's a, it's pretty cool place to go get some uh holiday gifts. Shop local, everything's stuck on uh container ships. So now you gotta shop local. Any other announcements? Councilmember O'Callaghan, what do you got for us?
Not, nothing yet.
Lies.
It's still early.
You're, you're joking.
No, well, September tenth for the next first responded potluck barbecue.
If you do that in every meeting between now and September, we might all kill you.
Okay.
All right, any further announcements?
Um, I was just going to say that the Cornerstone Youth Group at Cornerstone Community Church is going to be teaming up with Choose Love, and they're going to be doing a virtual tree again this year. So it'll be on all the social media, but also on the Cornerstones uh Facebook page. But they'll have um tags for each individual child in the family. So um keep a lookout for that. But also Little Seeds Preschool, located in Cornerstone Church as well, is accepting hats, gloves, and socks for children in need in the community. So um if you happen to have extra, or if you're out shopping and you buy some, um, Little Seeds Preschool would love to take any extra that you can provide. And there'll be a drop box right out front of um Cornerstone Community Church as well.
Thanks, Rachel.
That's good information. Any other announcements? Library, we're uh just wrapping it up. You got anything for us? You're on mute. Still on mute. A darn mute button. Okay. Last chance.
Can't hear you.
A little wrong. Okay, well, it's nice to see you, Linda. Thanks for coming. All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Good night. Y'all have a good night.
Happy birthday to everybody out there.
Thank you.